Ready, we're.
Ready, call the roll.
Bird, Henson.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Angstrom.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
Uh, no changes this evening.
Who approve?
Second.
Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions under communications. A, Erickson Public Library Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Report, Jamie.
Thank you very much. Very good. Public Library, every year I come here to kind of give an overview of what the library's done the last fiscal year. Hopefully you've had a chance to review all this wonderful information, but I figured I'd kind of highlight some things that I think are important. Last year, we really tried to do community engagement. And I think a lot of what we're doing with partners really shows in making an impact. And some of the small things that we've done at Stanley Public Past, we have a mobile history bus. We've started plant swaps, which is really quite fun. A lot of that resource sharing where people come in and bring their, a lot of people don't know we do this, we try to market it. So if you don't know what's going on in the library, please follow us. And we have usually about thirty to sixty rooms a month, so that if people are saying we don't have anything to do when they're not, they're not getting the message. So we have started a pollinator garden out in the north side of. We did eighty outreach visits to schools and had seen almost thirty-five hundred kids, which I think is. For the schools and for Zach, who that's Zach and Rhonda going out to the elementary schools and the high schools. So the next page, the impact, kind of goes over how I am tying in what we're doing in the library to our long-range plan. The library board really focuses on those long-range goals. It's a five-year plan, and I think we're in our third year, and a lot of the schools we've already been able to tackle. So things like hotspots, we provided those, we started providing those two years ago, and they were so popular, we had to provide even more. And there's always a hold list, so if people aren't connected because they can't afford data or internet and they don't really want to sit out more parking lot, then they can check out a hotspot. The other thing I think I'm really proud of is that the Boone newspapers from eighteen sixty-five to nineteen twenty-six are online and searchable. And that was very expensive, that was over a twenty thousand dollar expense that was paid for from brand funding and also the memorial fund, so donations. This year, we also did a lot of partnering with all social organizations in May. So we did a lot of mental health awareness programming for the whole week. That was really fun to see, and I think what came out of that, that whole month was a lot of stories from people who were struggling with their mental health. And so it was fun to see, and I don't, I'm gonna see you guys all that often, tell you these fun stories. But on the very last page, I do, there is a testimonial that I think is really. Am I on camera, right? But I definitely.
Got you.
Good feeling. At the bottom of that impact, I did want to point out the fact that you guys had funded us, the pneumatics to digital controls early, which we are super thankful for, because we can be comfortable now and our patrons can be comfortable and that is huge in the library. That next page is all about the statistic, uh, annual eight. We track those every day, every month. And we also, at the bottom is the finances, a lot of good numbers there, most of our numbers did go up. Finances too, because that was a big capital improvement project. And then the last page, I really hope you do take some time to read through a lot of those stories. I think they're impactful. I think a lot of what our library does impacts people's life on an individual personal basis. I'm quite proud of it, so I hope you guys are too, because you're making that investment in our community. So if you have any questions for me, and if anybody wants a paper copy, I have a paper copy too, that's trying to be sustainable.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, you do have heat. That's very good.
Yeah.
And just when I had read through your report, I was impressed, you said over forty-eight thousand visits, which tells you how many people are actually walking through the door. Almost five thousand reference questions, so you must be an expert at about anything that comes to the door.
We get some really interesting questions. We helped a gentleman with, he was trying, he had lost a very, like, to him, it was very important historical, like, information about Little League back in the, like, nineteen seventies. And so we helped him through microfilm and lots of, lots of researching, put that all back together, which he gave us a donation for three hundred dollars.
Yeah, but that's a real skill to know where to go and how to track down information, so that's really helpful. And the last thing, I was really impressed, it said that you had done eight hundred and forty-eight programs. So that's a lot of in-service and training and sharing information, so it sounds like a busy year.
Yeah, I'm sad. On Wednesday, we had a fabric pumpkins, and I was not able to make it. So there's always something to do in the library. I'm not joking, there's something for everybody.
And it's not just kids, there are older people everywhere in between teens and tweens.
Yeah, so it is quite amazing. I don't, I know we get a lot of people visiting that say you guys are doing amazing things, so I think it's important for you guys to hear that too, so.
Well, and I feel like you've, maybe you've picked up some of what the why was doing for the community, and now that we're missing that kind of element, it seems like the library's doing a lot of those kind of programs and things for the kids too. Very good.
Any other questions for Jamie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ames Economic Development Commission, Brenda.
So how appropriate, I was, had the opportunity to meet Jamie and tell her, I look at all the programming and the things that the library does, it's such a wonderful team. She took a little reading about the things that are happening there. So I had copies of the report to give to the crowd tonight. That continues to be our pleasure to work on your path in your economic development efforts. And so the report tonight is really a snapshot of the activities that have occurred over the last few months. And so what do you guys have for our first page? You have the, this. Um, so remember, we have a dedicated job board that we promote through Facebook advertising, we promote it here on the radio station. We've added an enhancement, which is the pop-up window that prompts users to actually submit a repay. We launched that two weeks ago, and I've already seen a nice number of those come in, and we share those with our industries in the form of a database to try to connect those people that are going to that step to get a job. You can see where the Facebook numbers are up and the number of people reading Facebook. The blue box up in the corner is our economic development marketing effort. So every month, we send out emails to site selectors that may be doing site work for businesses looking to grow and expand. And so you can see the open rate up almost eight percent from last year. And we showcase the R.L. Fisher as well as the Boone Business Park in those efforts. So we also do partner emails that go out that talk about expansions, existing industry activity, workforce initiatives. So you can see what those numbers look like as well. Little glimpse, the most recent unemployment number we have, it's for August. I anticipate we'll get the September numbers next week. You're up a little in Boone County, that is terrifically really where we're at as a region. We are a bit over last year, and so. You know, it's still not a huge jump, and people are still telling us they're having trouble finding people, but it's noteworthy that we are up a bit in both story in Boone County. We actively market to folks that have indicated an interest on the website. So we've done a workforce marketing, highlights the open rate there. Future Ready is really our pre-K-12 newsletter, goes out to businesses in school. And I don't know that we've ever had an issue that doesn't feature something that's going on in the Boone schools. So we work also with the Boone County Economic Community Group, and I'd like to direct your attention to our new website. And so the website is really focused on economic development, our buildings and sites. So we launched that last month and have a plan to keep that updated. So it's, we're working on the links that everybody needs to link to. We found out officially since we last met that we got a hundred thousand dollar catalyst award for the building across the street. That's going to be really focused on repairing the roof, and so that building can be converted into a restaurant. The owner occupied grants, so I've talked about this a few weeks ago when I was here. We've got six of the eleven. When I developed the report, we're now up to seven, and we're getting closer every day to wrapping up that project. So we've paid out almost fifty, almost fifty thousand, we have a little bit left. And I'm continuing to look for opportunities to bring forward where we can get some additional funding. We have folks that missed the deadline, folks that we weren't able to fund. Feel like we've got a good case to ask for some more money. Again, that'll trigger a local match, so we'll have to discuss that at another meeting. But those have went over well, and like you, the stories of the impact we've made in homes that didn't have hot water and had questionable electrical wiring and sewer issues, those grants have been the catalyst to get some stuff done in people's homes that needed to be done. I wish we could ripple that number of what we've been able to help. We are having our annual meeting for Boone County Economic Growth on November seventh, and if you have an interest in attending, we'd love to have you there. Debbie Durham is our speaker. Boone Growth is rolling out a new investment structure, they've revised their bylaws, and we'll be talking about our plan of work and really, we appreciate the partnership that group has with the cities across the county. So I think there's exciting changes ahead for that group, and we're interested to talk more about that at the meeting on November seventh. I included the highlights of the housing needs assessment. I know you spent a lot of time with the council on that, but this report goes further than your eyes. And it's these takeaways that I know all of us are concerned about as we look to enhance the housing in the communities. So it's hard to look over the numbers that we have one in five that are heavily cost burdened. If you're a renter, it's even worse. The median year of construction for our residences is nineteen twenty-two. Again, so we have a big need to add housing units, and I know that's going to be much of the focus for a lot of us in the coming years. Fox Point, I included the beautiful aerial shots of that project, and it's moving along, and I'm very excited. I see that they are taking folks and starting their interest list. So if you are needing help getting connected to them, I'm glad to help make that connection. But they are, they are to the point now that they are taking people to go on their waiting list. And then I highlighted the successful workforce housing application that we got for the project going on in Ring Bowl. And that'll be adding eight higher-end rentals into the market. Anticipated, I've been the buyer for a few weeks, but I assume they'll get this all in, and hopefully we'll see construction going out in the winter. Any questions for me? Like I said, it's been a busy three months, and even more exciting stuff in the pipeline. So I'm sure I'll be back between sometime before you see me again in three months. So thank you again for your support, and make sure if it works in your schedule, we'd love to have you at the annual meeting for Boone Growth.
When, when the owner occupied grants have all been paid out, is it possible to get some, like, testimonials or something like that?
Absolutely.
Advertise it, we get another round of funding or to the state, or, I'm sorry, to the trust fund, so we can lobby for that money.
So I actually have, it provided me with photos, and absolutely, I think that'll be a good thing to share as really a wrap-up for all of you. The other thing that I want to make sure I present when we get all the final numbers is, yep, there were a few, a few folks that needed all ten thousand, and gosh, their bill just happened to turn out at ten thousand. But these dollars also leverage larger projects. And so I think when it's all said and done and the dust settles, we'll probably have leverage as much private money as we did public money to get these improvements made. So hopefully, like I said, you'll probably see a wrap-up report before the end of the year. They're pushing, and it's been challenging if any of you, we all have work that needs to be done at our house. I've been waiting for a painting project for six weeks, and it's hard to get folks because they're busy. So but we are, we are seeing the end of it and hope we can build up some more funding.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, number four, report outstanding committees, policy administration, Linda.
No, not really. I was planning a reception for you because you were done, but you're not done, so.
Four more meetings.
I hear that, so we'll wait a little bit of that.
All right, thank you. Public safety, David's not with us. Do you have anything under that?
No, sir.
Utility committee, Terry.
I just want to give everybody a quick update on the UV project. We went out there and did the walkthrough, Terry was there, Bill was there, I was there. The engineers were all there. We walked through, Punch List wasn't real extensive, other than the guardrail system that surrounds the UV structure. We also discovered two items that were overlooked, that they missed completely on the drawings. And we're remedying that, those two things right now, we're swapping out the two concrete structures for some drainage flumes. They also missed a light pole, they're going to be doing that. They, I got to check my email just before I came here, and we do have the punch list now. So that's a good thing, so that can get started on that. The goal is to still have substantial completion by November fifteenth. The good news of that is that takes the pressure off of us for losing that grant. If we, once we receive that, we're golden. Yep, yep. And then we're still planning on closing the project completely out. Matter of fact, we'll vote on the substantial completion at the next meeting on the sixth. So that will close that out, and like I said, it's a good thing, we will salvage that six hundred thousand dollar grant. The remainder will be completed, completed by, those items will be completed by the fifteenth. If they aren't done, we'll use them as warranty items, so we will still have final completion before the end of the year. So we can remedy this situation, so. I just thought you guys, everyone should know. Thank you.
Hey, economic development, Terry.
ED meeting, we'll be meeting on the October twenty-third at eight AM to approve the work at the H&R Block regarding their BDF grant. Soon to follow, I would think, would be the BAME Insurance Building. I talked to Hans the other day, and they are, he is done, he just needs to get the paperwork and stuff done. I also put on your desk the invitation to the annual joint meeting for Ames, okay? They're, they're actually holding it at Cobblestone here in Boone. That tells you what, what they're, how they feel about Boone and what's going on here. So I invite you to, if you want to go, please join us, it could be interesting. That's on October twenty-fifth, so you can work that into your calendar, I think it's a good deal, so. That's all I have, your honor.
Good, thank you. Next up, Department of Forest Building official, Dave.
After last council meeting, and all you guys got this packet that we put together. So just a summary of this, obviously, council has directed staff to start looking at reviewing our, uh, ordinances, and of course, I was passed with zoning because that fits my niche. One thing I'll say with this zoning review is, we had a lot, a lot of layers of review on this prior to even getting here today. It kind of started with mid-Iowa planning, looking at our ordinances and giving them some guidance. Back when Ed was still here, he looked at those recommendations from NIPA, and then it ended up on my desk. I did another review with Bill, and Jim has got a chance to look at it also. So without going over everything, I'll just kind of summarize what we've came up with in zoning. So we looked at the four main zones for the city of Boone, commercial, industrial, residential, and hospital. And so what we came up with, again, with the understanding that when we did this review, we wanted to try to help streamline processes for people that want to build in the city without compromising what are core reasons for having zoning in the first place. So as a summary, we looked at first our industrial zones. We had several, we found when we started reviewing industrial is our M-one and M-two zones within the city were almost identical. There was one stipulation on some building requirements, and we thought one of the very first things we could do is just combine them. Eliminate one of those zones and combine them together just to eliminate confusion when somebody is coming in to look into build in industrial areas. So that was our first suggestion, is taking our M-one and M-two, combining them into one zone to eliminate there being as many as there is right now. On our commercial, we looked at that, commercial was kind of a little bit of a different animal, because there's so many different niches within our commercial. Some allow residential, some don't. And with our recent change that we made to our downtown district in requiring the brick front facing for the downtown area, we kind of felt that we've already looked at commercial, we've made some changes here recently, and we didn't really want to mess with it too much. We, we think it's a pretty good product that we have already for commercial, but we can definitely look at anything if you guys had some suggestions down the road on this stuff. With our residential, when we got looking at that, one of the main things that stuck out in my mind right off the bat is one of the goals is to get some of our back, backfill lots completed. When I got looking at the R-two residential zones, one of the things that stuck out to me immediately is that all those lots, especially in the northern part of town, when they were built, were built at a different size than what our zoning allows now. So to me, it made more sense for us to kind of change our zoning regulations to fit what, what product we have out there to backfill. Our zoning regulations for a single-family home in a R-two area require sixty-five foot of width. Ninety percent of the lots up on the north end of town, which are zoned R-two, are, were all designed at sixty feet. So every time we were wanting to backfill and put a new house on there, we were having to run the zoning board of adjustment, get a variance on it, which were most of the time being granted, we're talking about a five-foot distance on here. So it made sense to us to go, well, why don't we just put that down to fit the size of the lots? Streamlines it for people, and sometimes when you talk to builders and you tell them, we got to go to ZBA on this, it scares them a little bit. So that just eliminates that, allows them to go in and build on a, on a lot that would have had a house there anyway at that same size.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense. The third district we looked at was hospital. One of the suggestions that NIPA came up with is maybe we needed to look at a public institution district versus a hospital district. What that would do is it would allow for more things, such as schools and other type buildings, other governmental buildings. But when we looked at it, we got looking at the land. A hospital is landlocked, and so when we looked at expansion, there's no really anywhere for it to go unless they were to mow down some houses and, and, and open up some lot areas. So there again, we looked at it, and is this a battle that we wanted to look at right now, and we didn't think there was. They're landlocked, they don't have a lot of room for expansion, and the area that they do own is already zoned appropriately. And I said, well, maybe that's why we don't need to mess with it.
And one question, yes, question on that, so when we have things like Iowa High School Sports and DMAC, what, what are those zoned? Because they do seem to be like they're a public institution, but they must be zoned something else.
So for schools, you mean?
No, I'm just saying, like, they're not a hospital zone, they're something else.
So schools can be built in multiple zones across the city. And I've attached some of the zoning regulations on that, that sheet I sent to you, and there's several zones that allow for schools. So if they wanted to build a school in.
So DMAC and IHSA would fall into that category.
Yes, they would. So just to, just to kind of summarize what we looked at, we looked at combining some of the, the M-one and M-two together. We didn't recommend any changes on our commercial. We did look at reducing size in our R-two, especially for single-family home to fit the size of our lots up there currently. And the hospital district, we felt that there wasn't really a need for a change right now, but if the hospital would come up with a plan, we can obviously attack that i-if it would come down the pipe.
That's what I was wondering, do they have any, any desire to expand or any needs?
Right now, you know, if they would come to us with a site plan that says, you know, this is what we.
We really would like to go ahead and build this.
Look at it at that time. Yeah, certainly. With that, we're just looking for some direction from council with your input on, if you like what you see here, we'll proceed with moving forward with it. If you see any changes or any other things you need, like us to look at, you certainly do.
Tell me a little bit more about the commercial, you said that covers a lot. Are there any other things we should consider there in improving or changing?
So again, with commercial properties, you have C-one, C-two, and three. And two of those commercial districts allow for some housing in it. The way we have it set up with downtown, having apartments above businesses and the other districts in town, I felt that it's set up pretty good. Both of our C-one, which is our most restrictive commercial, is all down south. You know, Walmart is and those areas. The other districts are in over-established areas that already have residential in the places that are allowed. Again, we didn't see anything that stuck out so much that we, we felt we needed to make this time with it.
We could still do this on a case-by-case basis anyway.
And that's always a possibility.
Make those changes if we want to, it's just.
He did, just like the hospital.
Blanket changes can be a little dangerous, like he's talking about. I kind of like the case-by-case, because that gives us the opportunity to weigh all the alternatives.
And again, when we looked at this, we weren't, we weren't trying to be radical. We wanted to streamline the process, allow people to more efficiently be able to build in the city without changing the scope of why we have zoning in the first place. You know, and some of these have been in place for a very long time, they're very specific to the areas that they're zoned that way.
And that was just, I was kind of curious on if we were progressive enough to kind of fulfill what we needed.
I think it's progressive anytime we look at zoning and making changes and streamlining, I think that is half the battle right there.
So one of, yeah, the lot size alone, I know that's something that really hinders growth and that, and info and stuff like that. Are we going to sixty, is the recommendation sixty?
Recommendation is to drop R-two down to a sixty-foot, because that fits what our lots were designed at originally.
And then the second thing is, I'd be remiss to not mention it, but Dave's not here, and he's the one that brought it up a lot. The trees on the commercial, the, the number of them, he said that it was absurd number that they had to put in. The trees on the commercial, the, the number of them, he said that it was absurd number that they had to put in. Had to do a lot of variances for that.
Requirements on some of the commercial, that is definitely something we could look at.
I talked to David because he was the one that really had that as an interest.
But again, that's kind of, that was kind of separate of looking at the zoning themselves. Landscaping covers several different things at once. So if that's something you want us to look at, we certainly will.
I was just to make sure because he's not here. So to advocate for that position.
Well, I'm in favor of the changes that you want to make.
These look good pictures.
Yes. Okay, if that's the case, Jim will make the changes in the ordinances and we'll bring them for the first reading.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Very good.
Hey, next up, Finance Officer Andrea.
Oh yeah, our copiers and printers here at City Hall are on lease and that lease expires next month. So I have met with IMAX and they have presented a proposal. These are the copier all-in-one machines that are in our main office, the building department, my office, and then a printer for the accounts payable and payroll personnel. And then this also includes a purchase of the building department's current printer of two thousand and ten dollars and sixty-five cents. That all-in-one machine is not utilized significantly. And I feel that it would be a good machine for the city shed. Their machine is actually hand-me-down from the library and is significantly outdated. And we are having trouble getting parts for it. And so they don't use it enough to justify a lease agreement or even a maintenance agreement. So this would be just a flat-out purchase of the machine. By renewing this, it is a five-year lease agreement. We would get all new machines and we'd save a hundred and twelve dollars per month. If I can take any questions, otherwise we have a resolution to approve that I needed a motion for.
How old is that cannon versus the one that they have currently?
I'm not sure how old the one is. They, I mean, they've had at least five years.
Before that, it's probably ten to fifteen there.
Yeah.
We were told it is non-reversible.
And this is a nice sized machine. It's not real big. So I thought that this would work really good down there. And it has the multiple drawers where mine's just a single drawer. Otherwise I would have offered mine up, but mine does get used quite a bit. So I didn't think that it was a, a machine that would be good to buy out.
Need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
So moved.
Call the roll.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next up, City Attorney Jim.
I do have a report.
All right.
As you recall, mayor and council asked staff to look into whether or not we could place signs near the railroad crossings that would advise the residents of the number to call if they had a complaint. My initial, excuse me, my initial discussions with the railroad indicated that they thought that would be illegal to, to do. So I asked to speak, set up a conference call. Unfortunately, that took us three months to, to get arranged, but today, Bill and I participated in that phone call with their legal counsel and there's probably what, five or six people from the railroad in the call. They are of the opinion that we cannot place in the railroad right of way any sign that would indicate that phone number. They say those signs are, signs and placements are regulated by the federal government and it's not authorized. I agree with that assessment. But they also agree with our assertion that we can place signs anywhere else. So if we want to place signs on our property, in our right of way or in other locations, as long as it does not block any of their signs, then, then we're, they, they believe that is, is legal and, and appropriate. As a matter of fact, they thought it would be a good idea because the only time anything is going to be resolved is, is if complaints are made. And those complaints are made to that phone number, they compile that information and then pass it on to the appropriate authority. So, so if those phone calls are made, that, that might very well result in in something be done about the blockage of the crossings. So I think we, staff would need some direction as to how you want us to proceed, but Bill took the opportunity to discuss with them the condition of the viaduct. Obviously, the railroad is very concerned about the structural integrity of their, their viaducts and those things. So they have checked it, they check all of them and, and they say there's absolutely nothing structurally wrong with that. As far as appearance, they don't care about the aesthetics, they don't care about, about that at all. And they have no program to remedy that situation. So the good news, it's structurally sound. Bad news, it's ugly.
Or is there any possibility that the city could paint it? I mean, that we could offer to paint it, not do anything else to it, but just try and improve that appearance?
They have a, a process that they're going to send us the information on as to what possibilities might be, and that might be one of them. I don't.
Okay.
I don't know.
At least they're thinking about it.
Ellen, you know, it's clearing that brush out, those volunteer trees and everything like that. Would be a lot, it's possibly for it to look a lot better.
I'd like to drug staff to start looking into the signs. Big, big numbers.
With your name, call, call. Okay, just, just.
I mean, I've been, my idea.
I know.
Month.
I know.
And, and they, they agreed it was a good idea to do that. That's the only way anything's going to.
We put them back and get them up there good.
You want the, do you want the web portal on that? There's two, two venues to go through.
You could, but I want their phone number big because no people are going to be sitting there.
Web portal too.
I'm going to get on the, I mean, they might go home, but I'm thinking you're going to call.
So are the, are the dividers that, like on Green Street, can we put them on those or is that the?
That's railroads.
Well, we're going to have to ascertain exactly where the railroad right of way is and go from there.
Yeah, those are ours.
Yeah. You know, can we put a, you know, put a sign on that and then, or?
I, I think not during the right of way. I mean, I imagine that extends back from the railroad crossings. But we'll figure that out.
From the FRA told me it was fifteen feet both sides.
Fifteen?
That's what he told me. Waylon?
From the edge of the railroad track.
Get on signs.
Five crossings, I'll get on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Oh, sorry, that's all I have.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Public Works, Waylon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quick, I'll just give you an update. The South Marion West Park Avenue paving project is, it's been underway, but we, we have pavement on the ground now. The Marion Street section of it has been paved, it has reached maturity and all the homeowners are exiting through that as of now. There is a little bit to pour at the intersection. But timeline for it is this week, they're finishing utilities. Then the rest of this week and next week will be grading and they will be back for pending, you know, weather and everything somewhere around the thirtieth and hopefully they can move out within ten days of that. So they're looking at the first part of November as being completely done now. One little enforcement thing that happened today was they, doing the utilities, the water main had to be extended and done. And when they, it took a little longer than I expected to. And we got one homeowner without water today. So minor inconvenience for a big street that's not affected to them. The contractor is working on solutions for him. I don't know where that is. It just came in right before the meeting. So I will follow up after here and make sure that the contractor offered something.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Engineering.
First item is the Raz Pump Project at the wastewater plant. I've talked about this project before. SEH is the engineering firm handling the project for us. There, SEH put out for bids on that. There were two bids, one in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six oh three twenty-six with Iowa Pump Works. The other one is the electric pump company, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, one seventeen. The recommendation from SEH is that we accept the eighty-five thousand, six oh three six from Iowa Pump Works. And in the packet, there is a resolution number thirty-one forty-four. I'll answer any questions you have or Perry can, if I can't answer on them. Otherwise, I'll need a motion to approve resolution three one four four.
To approve, second, call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Item number three is resolution three one four seven. If you remember, we are going to do a total of about five million dollar improvements in the, in the plants, two point five million at each one. SEH is the engineering firm that's going to run that, that project. In the council packet was a resolution authorizing, authorizing the contract. That's in there as well. The cost of the contract for these projects, and there are three different projects, is a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. However, the construction observation services of that contract that says twenty thousand is actually up to twenty thousand, not, not to exceed it. So as you know, we got the approval for the loans already for the engineering and planning of these projects. So this is that next step. If you're so inclined or answering questions, you need approval of resolution three one four seven to approve the contract with SEH for the water treatment plant improvements project.
Second, call the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
The next item, number four, resolution three one four eight, is basically what I just explained other is the wastewater plant. There are several projects down there. It's going to be three different divisions. Improvements to the sludge facilities, improvements to the headworks building down there. This is all part of the operation of the wastewater plant as well as improving three roofs down there, there, right? Three roofs down there. The cost of this, for them to engineer this project, this is more extensive than the water plant. As far as the projects, the, the cost is three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Again, the, the loan from SRF for the planning and design of this project has been, has been approved. The construction observation services where it says forty thousand, it's up to forty thousand, it cannot exceed forty thousand. I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise I'd ask for approval for resolution three one four eight for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
So moved.
Second, call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay, next up, Public Safety Chief Adams.
Go report, Your Honor.
Chief Weebolt.
Go report now.
City Administrator Bill.
Okay. The first item, if you remember at the last council meeting, we were talking about upgrading, changing the sidewalk program downtown or adding it to our current policy. On your desk are two handouts. The first one is this sheet here, which would be the application process changes. And in red is what we would change. So there'd be two separate applications. One for the residential sidewalks, one for the downtown. That's why this is in red. Because it, it, we're just going off the one we had for the residential. Also on your desk is the sidewalk improvement program, policy that we have. And we're coming, so we'll have this policy, it's for all programs. You'll notice in there, everything in red again is the things that we'll be adding to the policy to include downtown sidewalk policy. And the changes are on pages two and three of the handout that I gave you. After that, I don't think we had anything that we needed to change, correct? So those are the changes. If this is satisfactory to the elected officials, what we will do is bring back this policy and this application for final approval at the November sixth council meeting with all the red outs. It'll just be, but tonight we're here to answer any questions. This is what staff came up with as far as improving the sidewalk program, the policy as well as the application that the resident or business owner would fill out. And I'll try to answer any questions you have. We feel we put together a, a good policy. But obviously we will change it if you want it changed or make any corrections.
Could you summarize just the highlights, a couple of the, I mean, the key items this is changing?
On which document?
The sidewalk policy, just the.
The, this one right here? Or the other one?
Not the form they fill out, but the, the actual policy.
Okay, so if you go to page two, down half the page where it says sidewalk construction related to new development is not eligible for this program. This is downtown, so the, the, all the wording in black is in the current policy. The, everything in red is what we're adding to it to include the downtown policy. So it just adds, it's a volunteer program and we added end downtown business locations. Request for assistance will be reviewed by departments. Staff and determination will be made for eligibility, eligibility, excuse me, which shall be determined in the sole discretion of the building official to the administrator. If you keep reading, the next line is the program encourages residents and business owners to repair deficiencies and construct new sidewalks and promote safer pathways. And then the last sentence in that paragraph, this program will assist in providing opportunities for citizens to walk freely in neighborhoods and downtown.
So this is broadening that whole, yeah. Right.
Yeah, sorry.
Downtown.
Adding, just adding that.
Yes. It never existed. Right, but.
Right, so we're.
So we're adding it to.
And making the change so that if it is an area impacted by a tree planted by the city of Boone, then there's a fifty percent reimbursement, not just a twenty-five percent.
Yes, increasing, yes. Thank you.
Yep, council, so chooses, we will bring this back in approval form November six.
I think it's likely discussed.
Yeah, good.
Good, looks great.
Okay. So I've been asked about the schools. And you know, with the new school opening, there'll be two schools that will not be needed anymore. It's Lincoln and Paige. I'm here to tell you tonight that the schools have received non-binding letters of intent for purchase of Lincoln School and Paige School. There is a organization out there that AMDDC brought to the table to the school that they were aware of in other cities called the Capstone Group Incorporated. They purchased these buildings and they refurbished them, remodeled them, whatever words you want to use for workforce housing, market rate apartments. They're very interested in these two schools. This would, this is a long process. There'll be grants applied for and I'll be bringing it back to you later on as I have more information and I can give you more detailed information on what it's going to look like. I mentioned that it was a nonprofit, so that means they don't pay property taxes. However, in a development agreement that the city would be involved in, they would pay the city so much per apartment each year. So for example, if one building had thirty-five apartments, they would pay the city in lieu because they don't pay property taxes, but for services that the city provides them. If a thousand dollars an apartment, it'd be thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
So both of these that they're looking at would use the building. I mean, they're not talking about removing.
No, no, it's the building states, yes.
They're talking about actually re-converting that building into, yeah.
And where have they done one of these close by? Do they do the beta?
So yes, we are working through the process and the beta.
Okay.
And I think coming up here, we'll be making a trip to Cedar Rapids, correct? On a similar project to take a look at it. Anybody from the councils, welcome to go. Just let me know if you. Anybody from the councils, welcome to go, just let me know if you want, we'll let you know the time, but we we think it's important to at least take the time, make a trip over there and look at the, look at the project.
Is there any indication what they would do with the uh unused land? Well, well, yeah, futures, that'd be a separate question from what I was gonna ask, but the open area, say behind Page with playground is, or that huge side area on Lincoln?
That's a very good question, Page School.
Yeah.
They can't do anything because it's not very big, it's just incorporated into the project. But I think there are opportunities for additional housing over at Lincoln in the northwest corner of that property. Uh, we had conversations with them about that and I certainly think that's on the table, that'd be fair, Brenda?
That is fair.
Yeah, well, um, they can't use the uh, the area behind Page School, I know that people in the neighborhood would really like to have a park there still, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we're talking about, I I know when we had conversations with them, we were walking through the school. They, they mentioned that they liked that outdoor space, it just wasn't real big.
Yeah.
And that they would incorporate that, but I can't sit here tonight and say it's gonna be a park.
No, 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 I'm just saying that there was, you know, some interest that directed to the school board from a resident.
Sure. There must be parking, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, parking over there is all on the streets, so.
Obligated to.
Yeah. Sure, absolutely.
But it would probably, they're talking apartments.
Yeah.
So I mean, that would really help out with our housing since we continue to hear how short we are on housing unit.
And as you mentioned, market rate, right?
Market rate.
What's the, what's the, what's the rough timeline um to shore up?
Have you talked to them lately on that?
A little bit about, about timing, um. The, the school wants to move quickly, probably in the transition of the property, um, so um, we'll need to see, you know, just how long of due diligence period the developer is interested in moving through, so. Um, but or I think we'll be here to kind of assess the properties. Um, I'd like to at least get uh Bill and a couple of school representatives to look at light projects uh that the specific architect that they utilize has done in Cedar Rapids. Um, we found that really helpful in in Nevada when we were going through the process, just so we could say, we've seen the instruction, we've seen how they do a reuse project. It won't actually go in uh to the state for consideration until next June. So they won't actually do any work to start communique the housing, so probably a year from now. Uh, but I do anticipate that they would assume ownership, it'd be responsible for making this, it upkeep
Yeah.
Uh, sometime before next June. It all goes as planned on the, on the due diligence, they're still analyzing how many units would be available. Those sorts, they were far, far from having to deal with that, but I think it's a good step to be able to start having a dialogue with the school board.
And Terry did ask a question, we didn't really get back to it, on the futures building, are they, would that be part of purchase or is that completely separate?
No, actually, that's part of the purchase, actually, they talked about, or one of them uh, looked at it to see if they could do something with them, but I think ultimately they decided they're gonna tear it down.
Yes.
The building across the street that they own.
Yeah, the old case.
Yeah, it's not part of this. It's some, it's separate, isn't it, part of this deal?
Anything else I can answer for you? Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, sure. That's exciting.
Okay. Oh, my next one is, well, Brenda covered this, but I, uh, the Boone County Economic Growth Corp annual uh, meeting out at Cobblestone on the seventh of November. The cost of that is twenty dollars, I need to know some council uh people would like to attend that, I need to get you registered and the city will cover the twenty dollars. So does anybody, I know Terry, anybody else have any interest in going?
Yeah, Paul.
Kyle?
Corey.
Corey?
Kyle, you said Jim?
Yeah, Paul.
Okay.
Might wanna contact David.
Yeah, he's, I think he's, I don't think I can get a hold of him.
The Tuesday.
Who's that?
Someone gets back, I'll know.
Right, he'll be back.
Everybody else good? Drive four. And I'll, I'll get you registered, so you just need to show up.
Thank you.
Third, okay, my last thing, if you look on your desk, I handed you one of these where it says building a better Boone kickoff event, so over the last year various agencies have had leadership meetings. We kind of pick a spot, uh different, different location each time, so you can see who's on there, City Boone, uh Boone County. Boone Chamber, or the Boone Schools, uh, the Boone County Economic Group. So there's several of us that we get together and the reason we're doing this is so that we all communicate on what we're all doing and foster a good working relationship. Uh, the goal here is obviously for all those entities to work together and whether they partner in, in different things, so you know, for the betterment of Boone, a good example of that, what we're doing with the schools, so this really been a partnership between, at least so far, with uh the Boone Schools, the City Boone of the, the uh private partnership would be Capstone and then of course A N D D C, so those partnerships are very important uh to get projects to go, uh I can't think of a bad public-private partnership. So that's the purpose of, of why we meet, we've been meeting over the last year so that we all know what we're doing and we're all getting together and working together, so what the group decided to do is have a kickoff event so that we can let the community know what we're doing, so that's what's gonna happen on November third at ten AM here in the Boone uh City Hall Auditorium. Uh, of course, you guys are uh encouraged and are welcome to come and and listen to that if you can. And uh I don't need to know now, but if you decide to, just maybe an email to me, it'd be great, so I know uh, and I can accommodate. And the public is invited, there'll be some advertising on it and everything like that, so that, again, that is a, I think it's a Friday.
Yes, Friday, yeah.
Right, yeah. Ten AM here in the auditorium, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Nice.
Good idea.
Yeah, and we really need to do that.
That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Number six, consent agenda, are there any items under the consent agenda that you'd like removed and discussed separately, and if not, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yeah.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Seven, we have nothing, number eight, mayor's comments, I want to thank Swan Creek for the fine work they did on our debt, they refurbished these. They don't hold any charge to it, they, they did it in faith, wanted to give back to me. Uh, if you knew how hard it was to get these things out of here, down there, a lot of work for them, but they really turned out nice. And I want to thank them, and we're gonna do something for them, I believe. Um. The council member comments.
I just have one, um, I think you all received that email from me, I would really like the city to request a public meeting from Aliant Energy. Um, going forward, similar to what we had the last time they pulled this. Um. I also have out in the lobby, there's some form letters that you, you're willing, you know, you're uh more than welcome to take to send to, to the Iowa Utilities Board. Um, there's one of these spreadsheets I gave you, all one of these, this kind of tells you what your rate increases will be. And there's also a fact sheet out there. Really like the city to go ahead and apply or send a notification to them that we'd like a public meeting.
Yeah, I think the closest ones are about an hour and a half from us.
Yeah.
On the six.
The closest one is Cedar Rapids.
Yeah.
One in Cedar Rapids.
Clear Lake and, or something like that, so.
So typically in the past, we've joined other cities and donated towards the cause to fight the rate increase, I don't know if that's we're there yet.
But it, it's recommend, the extensive increase and
Yeah.
The, the notice that they sent out and the reasons that they gave is just double talk, if, there's no real.
More wind and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the last time that.
We, we paid for so damn many windmills now that.
Oh, and I asked them last time they were here, if, if the government didn't subsidize those windmills, I said, does it pencil out, and he said, no. So you're, we're already paying for it.
Well, the problem is, is that they build these things under the guise that it will keep our, the utility bills low, and then they raise our rates every year.
Tired of it.
Yeah, and not to mention the fact, they ship some of that electricity out of state.
Yeah.
At a huge record profits this year, record profits last year, at least this time, they're not doing an interim period where they raise our rates in lieu of the actual rate like they did last time.
Yeah, we can coordinate.
Interim rate raised seventy million dollars last time, so it, there's just a lot going on and I think we need to make our feelings known, so if there's stuff out in the hallway, you, you're more than welcome to take some, I know Jordan took some, a whole pack of the letters he's gonna spread around, feel free to do that, we need the more the merrier, okay? And if you don't uh want to pick up one of those letters, shoot me an email and I will send you one, okay? That you can print.
Yeah.
That goes for comments.
I just want to share that I visited the open house, the new elementary building, and what a great asset for the community of Boone, it is a beautiful building, well done, and just fun to go in and see all the little furniture and the the way they've decorated it and the little nooks that they can sit in and read a book and, and it is just, if you haven't gone in, you should stop in, it is it's so different than the elementaries we all went in or that I did, I mean, it's just, it's really a fun building.
Yeah, any other council comments? Any uh public comments for items not on the agenda, Eldon?
Thank you.
Oh, you like those, yeah. You're welcome. Any other public comments?
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
By new inspection.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
We can check on that, I think, the, I think we notify them every time something gets stuck under there.
I can, I can speak to that.
Can you, okay.
Yeah, so we've unfortunately, we've had a handful of, uh, somebody's going to there and calling them, or these damages, sometimes each time we do that, we call the railroad and, and let them know that there's a train, uh, their bridge is, they send a bridge inspector every time. And they always, they always give it the green light, they, everything's fine, so it's been looked at at least by their, their bridge inspectors probably six to ten times this year alone. So it was a recent, the recent problem multiple.
Any other uh public comments? Not in this meeting, I would join.